Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, April the 3rd of 2017. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. We would ask the administration to note that Councillor Jacksaw is absent. We would move to the agenda, and we have one addition to the agenda. Item number six under New Business, and that's approving an exempt permit for the Voyager's Ducks Unlimited to conduct a raffle. Your pleasure with the agenda and the addition.
I would move on the addition.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to approve the agenda with the addition.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried and agenda is approved with the addition. Thank you. The minutes of the March 20th regular City Council meeting. Your pleasure with the minutes.
I'll move on the minutes.
Motion by Councillor Drowba to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the resolution with regard to transfers and accounts payable claims. Transfers are the new fund number 101 of the general fund from the lodging tax fund, Accounts payable claims, the City of International Falls, $437,774.82. Airport commission claims of $27,111.74. So that's a change from what was there. Twenty-seven, one-hundred-and-eleven, seventy-four. And then Airport Commission Terminal Project claims of $738,304.93. Your pleasure with the resolution.
Move on the claims.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to adopt the resolution approving the transfers and claims.
One second.
Second by Councillor Drowba. Question on the motion or the resolution? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted, and the transfers and payments to accounts payable are approved. Thank you. Go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council that is not on the agenda?
Last year, these messy yards, junkyard yards. I worked on them three times last year, and they're still there. And then I took some pictures, and in behind me on the alley there is Sears, and he moved away, and he left a whole pile of garbage there, and parts of motorcycle, parts of snow machines. It should be all cleaned up, but there's nobody living there. As far as I know, they all since he owns that place, unless he sold it to somebody.
And the address there?
910 9th Street.
910 9th Street?
And a pile of stuff there. You have to get out of your car and back around behind the garage and take a look. It's all piled up against the garage. There's motorcycle, all stripped, there are no tires, nothing on it. Just body there, little sidecar, poor motorcycle. And there are a bunch of tires there, four-wheelers and car tires. And the garbage there right full, with no lids on them, just sitting there.
All right. We will certainly have someone take a look at those and see what needs to be done.
705 8th Street, there's a van that's sitting there since last year. Their license expired, and there's fat tires on it sitting there. I drove by there today, but there's no stickers on the car to tow it away.
705 8th Street, I believe that one is in the courts. City Attorney, I believe that property, we are seeking to be able to remove that structure and clean up that area, and I believe that's the one that's in the courts.
And then on 929th Street, there's a van back there, and that license had been expired about three years ago. And they're sitting there. Possibly from that 917, it is 8th Street. He's got about, there must be about six buckets of garbage there, no lids on them. Last year, they were just like that, and there was a pile of flies flying around there. And I looked in the back of the house, and man, there's a pile of stuff there. I was going to take a picture of that too, but the guy was standing on the steps. So I just love the view.
With the snow gone, we'll make a tour of the alleys and those sections of town and see if we can't get those cleaned up for you.
I don't think last year was supposed to clean up streets. They never went through that area.
Well, I know some of that stuff has been cleaned out, but...
Because it's, it looks the same as last year.
Same as the garbage.
I drive by there one month, take a picture of the garbage and the buckets there, go back and take another picture, the same picture. Hauling their garbage away.
All right, Don, we'll see if we can do better.
Because it takes me my gas and my time to drive around checking on these things. Once they're cleaned up, no, it's a lot more.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that's not on the agenda that wishes to speak to the council?
Hi, my name is Julie. I'm from International Falls, and we allow drugs because of it. And there's people that, from the company down here, they, the people that are into drugs and retreats to that, follow through with it. And I think it's a terrible shame that they do all this stuff, and there's just no accomplishment whatsoever with these people in this town. And it's been overran with drugs, and we have to try and do something about it. Because towns burn the drugs greatly. That explains it right there. I've seen a lot of this happen, I've seen things going on around the Falls, and I intend to work with people and clean their places up also. And that includes themselves, the drugs, whatever it may be. We've got to stop talking about this. Very important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that we've had a number of arrests in the area of drugs, and that certainly will continue.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, there have been, I mean, illegal drugs are certainly a concern in the community, but law enforcement's been working extremely hard. There've been many searches and arrests and convictions, and so I can assure you that everything possible is being done to correct the situation, but it's, it kind of goes in cycles over the years. You know, I've been here for 40 years, and sometimes it's worth, there's a different drug that comes in, and you deal with that one, and then some new one comes in. But I know that our local law enforcement, both the police department and the sheriff's department, have been working cooperatively and very hard. I would say that's their number-one priority, and I think they've been doing an excellent job. It doesn't mean you can stop the problem, but we're trying to deal with it as best we can with the resources that we have.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishes to approach the council at this time? There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting for audience participation. We move to public hearings and the second and final reading of ordinance number 20 of the fifth series, an ordinance prohibiting excessive vehicle noise, including noise from trucks using engine-retarding brakes, and adopting by reference Minnesota statutes Sections 169.69 and 169.693, and Minnesota rules Part 730.1000 to 730.1050. Is there a motion to have the second and final reading?
I would move.
Motion by Councillor Drowba.
Second for discussion.
Second by Councillor Briggs. Discussion. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the ordinance?
Mayor, pardon?
Come up to the microphone, I think you'll carry better.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors, I'm Ray Higgins. I work for the Minnesota Timber Producers Association. It's a statewide trade association that represents loggers, truckers, sawmills, and other allied businesses in the wood products industry. First of all, just want to thank the mayor. The mayor's an old friend of our industry, and personally, we've known each other for a long time, and Bob has done a ton for our industry over the years when he worked at Boise and other variety of roles he's taken on throughout his 50-plus years working for the company and also since then. So thank you for everything you've done. Having said all that, you know there's got to be a however, right? However, you know, we have problems with this ordinance. I realize when you read through it, loggers are not targeted specifically, but you know, we know that there are, our industry's kind of one of the starts or where this all started. And by the way, we do have several members, loggers, truckers, here with us if you have any questions that I can't answer. One of the frustrations is, you know, we're just driving where we were told to drive. You know, the truck route was established for us to not go through town, to drive around town, be in as least populated area as possible. My understanding is that's been going on for 40 years or more. And so it's a frustration, and we're just kind of doing what we've always done. And you know, what we do share with the neighbors who have concerns about noise is, what we do have in common with them, we're just trying to mind our own business and be left alone. And I know that's what they would like, but we'd kind of like that too, because we kind of feel like we're just doing what we've always done, what we were told to do. Secondly, engine brakes, as are outlined in the ordinance, are a necessary part of a, it's a necessary safety part of any truck. I was in fact had an opportunity to talk to one of the commercial vehicle inspectors from the State Patrol today on the way up here. I was driving through Cook, saw a vehicle at the bank and stopped and talked to him for a while, and he said, hey, I've got engine brakes on my own personal vehicle just because they help with safety for a variety of reasons. If you use the normal brakes on a truck, they get too hot, too much, and then maybe they're not there when you really need them in an emergency situation. So a lot of truckers will rightfully, it's not uncommon, in fact common, that they will use their engine brakes where possible just to make sure that all their systems are working appropriately when they come into an emergency situation. The other thing we have concerns with in the ordinance is the subjective nature to it. There's no decibel specified in the ordinance, you know, the mayor and I had this conversation, and I get where he's coming from, but it's frustrating when we know that potentially anyone can, whether it's a complainant or law enforcement, can subjectively say this is or isn't. You know, it's in the ear of the beholder, right? I mean, it's one person's nuisance is another person, it doesn't, it rolls off their back. So you know, those are the problems we have, and I would ask councillors to vote against the ordinance. Absent that, ask for an assurance that we're correct in how we read it. And the mayor and I discussed Section 3 in particular, which says, if you'll allow me to read to you briefly, "It shall be unlawful for the operator of any truck to intentionally use an engine-retarding brake on any public highway, et cetera, within the boundaries of the city, which causes abnormal or excessive noise from the engine because of an illegally-modified or defective exhaust system, except in an emergency." We know defective exhaust systems are illegal, but illegally-modified, if, I guess we would like an assurance that if I'm driving, or one of our members is driving, a factory truck, that they are not, and uses engine brakes in the normal course of doing business, that they are not going to be targeted in this thing. And, you know, because some folks who are neighbors there may not understand that part, that nuance of the ordinance. I think that's important that we all, as we approach this, if unfortunately it passes, that we understand exactly what is going on here. So with that, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this issue, and we'll stand for any questions.
Okay, questions for Ray. Thank you for your comments. I certainly assure you I have the greatest respect and continue to have for the loggers and the logging industry of our area here. I think every one of them is, for the most part, very upstanding. I think the ordinance is written to focus just on those folks who may have modified their muffler exhaust system in some fashion. It's not really intended to go after someone who has a unit that just came out of the factory and meets all of the qualifications that the state and this ordinance would have. So, you know, I know that the truck route comes into the city on 3rd Avenue East, 332 from the corner by Berkstrom Wood Products. We also have trucks, not logging trucks, but other truckers that come in on Highway 53 and on Highway 11, and there are times that those trucks will use their engine brake and it seems ordinarily loud. I did speak with a logger this weekend, and one of the suggestions that he had, and I certainly would be open to considering it, is maybe having a timeline in here. He shared with me that he had visited a community here in Minnesota that had not been able to use your engine brake from 10:00 in the evening until 6:30 in the morning or something of that nature, and wondering if that would be more palatable to everyone in your organization.
Mayor and councillors, I'm not an expert on that. I mean, just off the top of my head, if it's at night, it's a little colder, conditions might not allow that. You know, just because it might be a little bit different, more freezing and whatnot going on overnight. If you allow me, I can turn around and ask some experts. I think that, you know, it's a safety issue, and is it, are conditions less safe at night or more safe at night? I mean, I get where you're coming from, because you don't want to wake anybody up. You know, so I understand your thinking, but you know, to me, when it's dark and a deer or something is more likely to, you know, not be able to see it, or it's colder at night theoretically, where maybe it's a day not unlike today where it's above freezing during the day, but colder at night, you may need braking power at night. So to me, I get where you're coming from, but you might need them more at night than you do in high-visibility, warmer conditions. I mean, does that make sense? I think what Ken is saying is that, if I can, you know, if you want to talk about limiting hours, particularly at the Boise PCA mill, they're not delivering overnight nine months or eight months out of the year, from, as you know, from mid-March to mid, or the 1st of December. So I realize you don't want to make anything more complicated than you want, but if you do want to restrict at night, maybe those eight months out of the year when we're not delivering. But if you're willing to modify, those four months, as you know, when there are a lot of deliveries, there are 500 deliveries there per day, particularly in those winter months, and many folks do deliver overnight when there's more of an opportunity to get in and out of there quickly. And like I said, lower visibility, maybe colder conditions, it might be a time of the year to leave that part of it alone.
And some of the folks that have called, and this certainly does, as you said earlier, not just focused on logging trucks or 18-wheelers coming into the community, this is for some of the young folks who may have modified their muffler system to be able to make a little more noise as they take off from school or...
I have a 17-year-old son.
We were all there. The, and so I, I guess the, but the folks who have called are talking about sitting in the evening and the rattling goes on. They live in the city, like 4:00 in the morning, truck wakes them up. You know, I don't know that that's reasonable, and so that's why I thought about what this one logger had shared with me this weekend.
I appreciate that, you know. I understand your point.
One question I have is regarding that Section 3, where it talks about illegally-modified. My question is, does that not satisfy for you all? I mean, are your trucks, if they're legal, and you get caught, there's no penalty to you, right?
Besides that, who decides who is legal? You guys, or you can't get them again?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Councillors and mayor, we, you know, it's an excellent point, councillor, and I know that, you know, at least one of our folks that I spoke with today has a truck with straight pipes, which my understanding is an illegal modification. He purchased a truck, it was like that, you know, I mean, they're not always buying brand-new shiny 2017, 2018 models all the time, so they're, you know, buying used equipment and used trucks at times. One happened to have that equipment on it, and that's why he has it. And I'm sure it's kind of a similar deal elsewhere. You know, our organization's not going to stand here and pound on the table trying to let you look the other way on stuff that's illegal, okay? But sometimes our guys do run into those situations. I think they're in the minority, but I guess that's how I would answer your question.
Mr. Briggs?
I just want to comment that I don't have 50 years in the paper mill, but I had almost 40 years. And I'm in the same boat as Bob. I don't want to do anything that's going to harm, you know, our number-one business and our truckers. Number two reason would be is my son-in-law would be impacted by this heavily also. But when it gets to illegally-modified, and I just got back from Idaho, and almost every town along I-90 and I-94, there was a sign when you're coming up to all the exits to all those cities, said no jake braking. So they've had reasons to change things. I live on the river, and I heard all the jake braking from all the Canadian trucks, and I know that they dealt with it over there by an ordinance doing the same thing. You know, I certainly don't want to do anything that's going to harm us, and that's what I thought when I read in Section 3, that if you have an illegally-modified exhaust system, it's no different than if I bark my Camaro with the exhaust system I have on that, I could potentially get caught, you know, because it's, it could be an illegally-modified exhaust system.
I appreciate that, councillor and mayor, and I hope your son-in-law called and worked you over a little bit on this deal.
I was with him all week.
Well, then he did his job. He upheld his part of the bargain. You know, that's why I mentioned Section 3. And part of the problem there is, and the mayor and I talked through this, one, to make sure that part of it is well-publicized, because, you know, folks might, might not know the difference just listening to it, hey, that's loud, they must be in violation when they're not, because it's not been modified. And secondly, you know, I don't know as a law enforcement officer, chief, whether your folks are going to know, and that puts you in a, yeah, so I mean, puts, might put you in an uncomfortable position whether to know or not just by looking at, you know. So there needs to be good publicity on that part of it. I know my friends from the media are here, so maybe that would help, but that's part of it. I mean, just knowing that that is a large part of this ordinance and one thing that might make it a little bit palatable for us.
You know, I'll ask a question to the audience. If it specifically states that illegally-modified, can you live with that? I would like to know if you can or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you want to say here?
Yeah, please, for a few minutes.
(Inaudible) decimal readings, has there been any studies done with the decimal readings? (Inaudible) anyone has a clue where we should be? Not all of us. (Inaudible) rules. Without a clue where we're starting from here, how are we going to make, what is the piece of this? 169 decibels at 90 feet, where are we going to be? Heavy weight straps? Or is the major down there, is my strap there going to be contained every three minutes? (Inaudible) is up there? We got to start somewhere that's reasonable, that everyone can look at one of the times, because 24/7, the 10 to 6 is not going to do a whole lot of good. I think we got to come up with a number to start with. Then we should be out there looking at schools and see who's really the culprit right now. Wouldn't cost anybody a dime. I know what number that we should be at.
Well, thank you. I think the decimal reading is, and I'm not an expert on it at all, that it's also based on speed, and so there's a number of factors that go into how you get a decibel reading. But I do know that the State Patrol officers in Minnesota are all trained with regard to what is illegal equipment. I expect that we may have to ask that the police officers get trained by the State Patrol to understand what illegal equipment. That's what we're after, and that doesn't just mean 18-wheelers coming into the community, it means somebody going down 11th Street, who we had, the citizen here two weeks ago, very upset about the noise on 11th Street. And so we're not just targeting one. And I guess I would turn to the city attorney and the chief. Can you share any light on Section 3, city attorney, with regard to the interpretation that would be placed on it?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, and at least for the foreseeable future, I would be the individual charged with prosecuting these alleged offenses. And, you know, from my perspective and... and a police officer can issue a ticket, but ultimately whether that moves forward or ends up, you know, sometimes we discuss those tickets and they end up being dismissed even after they're written, under certain circumstances. And I think pretty clearly, if a trucker that's on the designated truck route, you know, getting from wherever to the Boise scales, and your equipment has not been illegally modified, there's not going to be any ticket. I mean, I'm certainly not going to prosecute a logger into those circumstances. Now, if they've got that truck, you know, maybe after they've dropped their load or whatever, and they're in a different part of town or doing things in a different area, you know, I think the standard of, of what's acceptable within, inside the community and what's acceptable on the truck route and at the scales are two different things, you know, even though you're inside the city limits for portions of that. But obviously, trucking and logging is why this community is here. And, you know, I'm sure the council doesn't want to, and I as a prosecutor, don't want to do anything other than try to work with those people. And again, if it's not on those truck routes and if there's been something illegally modified, well, then we've got a different situation. And when you talk about where somebody bought a used truck and the equipment wasn't correct, well, they'd have an obligation to change that equipment. Because, just because they bought it that way doesn't mean that they got carte blanche in the future to use it if it's too noisy. You know, in terms of the, of the decibels, and I, and I, again, the complaints haven't been made to me, but I, the, where I envision most of the problem is, is with typically younger individuals who put special equipment on their big trucks because they think it's cool to rattle and make this noise. I mean, in my view as the prosecutor attorney, those are the people I would want to see targeted. And again, most of these things are going to be after the fact. It's going to be a difficult ordinance to enforce. We have the burden of proof. It's a criminal offense, so we have to prove it beyond a reasonable doubt. And so we're going to have to have witnesses. You know, if there's a denial that the equipment was legal or it wasn't loud, you know, it's going to be a he-said, she-said kind of a thing. And so it's going to have to be pretty egregious to, I think, result in a police officer writing a ticket or me prosecuting the offense. And I certainly would not prosecute any logger on a truck route that's operating with manufactured equipment. That's not the intent of this. And so, you know, is, are state rules, there are already laws, state laws and regulations that are on the books that are, you know, can be enforced. And I think, as I understand the purpose of the ordinance and the posting of all these signs, it's more or less to kind of put people on notice and get the word out, hey, we're taking this seriously, we want to deal with it, and keep it under control. So, you know, that's my take, you know, on this ordinance.
Is there any way we, I agree with the city, I don't know if the, with, our industry's problem or is it the... Um, if that's the case, then, then public map or 332 is accepted from everybody. From the example from, purpose over everything, time and money everywhere for everybody. Last thing we want to do is have more. We're going to have safety issues. That's, costs everybody one. That's being for a logger or anything or the logging industry.
Mayor, if I could, the gentleman does make a good point in that, you know, the law would then be redundant by passing this. Illegal modifications to engine brakes is already illegal. There's no reason to codify it again. And so, you know, he does make a good point. Folks that, you know, are running around with engine, with straight pipes or whatever, illegally modified trucks, could still be cited anywhere in town, anywhere in the state. That's already on the books. So from that standpoint, there's no reason to codify that on the truck route.
Well, and as I would ask the chief or the city attorney, can the, can the chief, can the city police tag someone based on state law?
Certainly.
They could, okay. So as long as they're within the city limits. And the, you know, I'm certainly pleased with Larry's remarks, but the, the corner of 332 and 3rd Avenue East, where they turn to go north on what is known as the Burner Road, that seems to be a kind of a hotspot with a fair amount of noise. And the older folks living in that area are, are not happy with the, with the noise at times. We also have, and I have folks that have suggested that we put a speed limit on 332, and I told them I would have no part of that. I said, these folks are, are trying to get their, their job done, and they've got finite time in the winter to do that. So I certainly would not entertain that. They've also said to me that the truckers do rolling stops through that intersection, and that that ought to be brought to a halt. And I said, you know, if there's nobody in that intersection and they pull up and they can roll through very slowly, that's just fine. I'm not going to certainly try to raise any questions about that.
Thank you.
So, you know, just trying to be reasonable with, with everyone, but, but I really, really think we need an ordinance to be able to bring forth the, the concerns of citizens and that hopefully we can get those bad actors taken care of.
I understand your position.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor. My, my position is, just like that gentleman said there, I don't want to put this over everybody for a few bad eggs. But if we don't have a rule to enforce for the bad eggs, we have nothing to enforce. I have all the respect for the loggers. I didn't work in the mill my entire life, but I do understand how important it is to our, our way of life up here. But I, I do think that we need to have something on the books so we can enforce for the ones that are recommend for the industry. And as of right now, we don't. So I, I would have to support this. And, and I know it's going to be tough to, to regulate, and there may be some, some calls that come up early, but I think as the police end up getting more knowledgeable with what is illegal, what isn't illegal, I think we can move forward in a diligent manner on this.
Thank you. Councillor, do you have anything, questions or?
I think this needs more time. I think we need to discuss with maybe more of the loggers to make sure they all don't feel this way about it. Give them more of an opportunity. They do feel targeted.
It's going to be tough for me to vote for this because I know almost all of those people out there, and my son-in-law and everybody in Burtstal that I know, and I certainly don't want to hurt anybody. I want to make sure absolutely that it has to do with illegal exhaust systems only. And, you know, I listened to Larry about 332, but, but where I live, the trucks, when they exit the scale, they usually go east on 11, and they're jake breaking. And I hear it, and it doesn't bother me. I have no problem with it, you know. That's, to me, that noise is money, you know. It's just like when people complain about the noise that the mill makes or the smell of it. Well, I'm sorry. That's our way of life up here, and that's, you know, without that, we won't have the life that we have here. And so until I am 100% sure that we are strictly going for illegal and that the people out there are satisfied, I can't support it, so.
Well, I think the, the city attorney has told us under Section 3, in the very last sentence where it says, "because of an illegally modified or defective exhaust system, except in an emergency." I think that says that, that it's very, very clear that, that the only time that it would stand up would be if it's illegally modified or defective. Is that correct?
Well, that is correct for Section 3, but that, that requirement's not present in Section 2.
Okay, what would you suggest?
Well, you, we could add the illegally modified or defective language to Section 2.
Okay. Take that same "because" and add it to Section 2?
Well, that, that would respond to the issue raised by councillor Briggs.
I'd be absolutely sure. It deals with illegal only. Any one of those guys out there gets stopped, you know, and he's got a legal, he shouldn't be, put through any hassle with it.
I certainly don't have any problem with that. But I think that if there's someone that's got straight pipes and they're rattling them as they're coming into, into town, that's not going to go. And it shouldn't.
I think the illegally...
I agree with Brian back there. You're going to have to have somewhere to start with. You know what I mean? Some kind of decibel meter or something. A little bit of variable. Time's all right, but maybe the mufflers are getting a little bit worn, you know, won't meet the decibel here.
Well, and I think, you know, there's, my limited understanding is there's a whole lot of factors that go into the decibel readings. That can depend on humidity, all kinds of things in the air. I think on a clear night, you're going to get a lot more decibels reading or higher decibel reading. So I think that there's any number of factors that, that will go into that. And I think that, that's, that's a slippery slope for everybody to, to be on. Just focusing on illegally modified or defective.
Mr. Mayor, I do think that that's, a vehicle in that condition would already be a violation of state law, I believe. And Ken, it may be, as a suggestion, rather than a whole new ordinance specific to the city, it may just be a matter of the council instructing law enforcement, we would like you to focus on these noise issues in these areas and see if we can't solve the problem or improve it, just by that being a focus of law enforcement, you know, over a period of time. If that proves unsuccessful, then a specific ordinance. But again, it's not that the laws aren't already there. It's just, and probably because it's a difficult thing to prove and measure and so forth. But we do, I know I've handled, you know, probably several complaints and citations a year that have typically been, you know, younger kids with mufflers that, you know, are too loud and so forth, and they get tickets issued. And one of the requirements is they have to, in addition to whatever fine they've got, they've got to report back to law enforcement after it's been corrected and have that new equipment, you know, or the repair bill proven to law enforcement for them to continue to operate that vehicle. So it's not, it's not something that's been totally ignored. It's not something that's not enforceable. And again, you know, the chief can answer these things better than I can, but, you know, as I think the council knows, you know, we've, over the years, we don't have as many law enforcement personnel now as we once had. And there's a limited number of things that they can do and put their time to. We've had a citizen here complaining about illegal drugs in the community and, and going after those people, which, you know, I know has been a focus of our law enforcement.
And a much higher priority.
Well, and that's, you know, where do we put our resources? Do we put our resources into stopping drug traffickers, or do we put our resources into reducing noise? You know, I mean, they're both issues, but we have to, you know, law enforcement has to select priorities, which they have done. You know, I think if the, I'm sure that they welcome guidance from the council, you know, if there are issues that come to the council's attention and the law enforcement, I know that those things then get attention. You know, we've had reports over the years of, you know, speeding in certain intersections or people not stopping. And when those complaints come forward, you know, law enforcement pays more attention to those issues for a period of time, and typically the situation is corrected. Usually you've got a few, like there've been talking, a few bad eggs out here. And, you know, so, you know, it sounds like we've identified, you know, some areas that are a problem. And, you know, maybe the chief can, can have some of his patrolmen there try to periodically, you know, watch that area a little bit. And if we catch a couple of these people and they act and issue some tickets, maybe we correct the problem without needing a whole new ordinance. You know, that's just a possibility.
I just want to paraphrase. You're telling me we could still be able to act on a, not necessarily a noise ordinance, but a noise Minnesota state law without enacting this at this time?
We have been. I mean, we have, we have had, you know, a number, you know, can't put a number on it, but, but in the, in the six years that I've been the city attorney, I'm sure we've had more than 10 citations and prosecutions for people for illegal mufflers and equipment and so forth. And they have to repair it and they pay a fine. And that's all been based on state law. It hasn't been based on any city ordinance. So, I mean, the, the city police, they enforce more state law than they enforce ordinances. And sometimes there's an overlap between the two. And, you know, but, but we, they enforce the state laws all the time with regard to noise. And not only with vehicles. I mean, we have noise complaints with regard to radios and BFRs, and we've prosecuted those. And, you know, where one homeowner is, is disturbing another because they've got, and there, you know, there are decibels, and they go out there and they could take a reading and, and all those things. And it's not required to have a decibel reading to enforce one. It's just one of several tools that you can use to, to enforce a violation.
Then my next question would be for Chief Manassas. Is the, is the police, I don't know, trained on knowing what, what to look for for illegal modified trailer, truck?
I mean, we, we certainly can deal with pickup trucks and your normal day-to-day, but I would have no idea what's modified on a semi. I mean, guys have to be trained on it and a lot of that, so I don't know anything about trucks.
Chief Manassas?
I think this is pretty simple. Otters, I believe, anyway, exhaust system. They have a legal sticker in the truck. They have a legal exhaust system.
I don't think the trucks, every, stand corrected. I don't believe every truck goes through an inspection every year. By, by a state patrol officer?
Not a state patrol officer. Is it over there?
Every year.
And so if someone's got straight pipes? So it doesn't, it's not covered?
Probably should be in there, but so far. Probably should be in there, but so far...
And I can tell you right now, they're totally legal. Six or seventies, eighties Detroit's. And how do we know that a jake break? And they're louder, take a nap from the stop sign and they are showing now. How are you gonna police this? What have we done with the decibel here? Because I guarantee you, only part of the noise is jake breaking. It's sort of an air noise. Now, worms, there's no way a Detroit does 10 times louder than a cat or a camel's. How are you gonna control this one? And if I go wrong with Billy or any of the guys over there, they're gonna twist and want to take them off. Well, no, for it. But why do I even have a jake break?
We certainly may have to train folks. That may be necessary. I'm sure if the state patrol officers can be trained to understand whether something is illegal or not, our police officers can do the same. I just think some of this has got to come to an end. And people have a right to living in a community to have reasonable quietness. They don't have to put up with some bad actors. And that's why this ordinance is before you. And you talk about enforcing it here, how do they enforce it everywhere in the state? And I've seen a lot of communities, as Brian pointed out, that have these signs up.
Can I answer that?
Yes.
I've trucked from here to Long Island, New York. It's been cited for a jake break, ever.
Oh, that's great. And I hope your equipment is always in good working shape, and I'm certain it is.
Maybe we could start him with the words illegal. That's gonna have to be what the signage is and that's what's gonna have to be on the ordinance. Engine brake. I don't, from what I've been talking with everybody for the last month, we're not against what you're trying to suggest because we do know there's some people that probably should be here. But how, if the sign says no engine braking, what's he gonna do? If I come up there with my little oh, I fucking you can't hear, but he's trained somebody that is, I'm using the engine brake, an officer in a position of this, he... The sign's gonna say no illegal. It's gonna be, it's gonna be an officer's personal opinion, I guess, or...
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schumacher, I have a fight in the chat.
No, I think one aspect that's in the ordinance that would probably be an excellent idea is the signs that say vehicle noise laws enforced. I mean, those signs, without the ordinance, those signs can be posted in those locations. And we can be enforcing the vehicle noise laws. They would be the state laws rather than a city ordinance. But, you know, again, I think it may be worth a try anyway for a period of time to put the signs up that the ordinance would call for. And the chief is now well aware of the council's concern for those things, so you could notify law enforcement as to the areas where most of the complaints have been coming from and just see if we can't, through increased awareness of the officers of those locations and the issues, you know, maybe catch and prosecute some of these people that are violating the state law. I don't know that, you know, not much that would be different between our ordinance and what the current state law is in terms of a violation. You know, I mean, the language in the legislation and the language of the ordinance is similar. And so, you know, I think if we, if by doing that we find that there's gaps in the state law that are a problem locally here that we're not able to prosecute, you know, then we could target our ordinance for those things. But, you know, and, you know, a lot of these other communities are using signs and maybe that signage alone would cause them to be aware and less likely to make noise.
Well, I would like to believe that. I don't know if they can all read.
Out again.
All right, I guess, what's the council's pleasure? Do we want to have a vote on the, on the, do you want a table for further consideration?
I would move to table.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to table.
Second by...
Second by Counselor Pearson. The ordinance would still stay on the, having passed the first reading, it would still be before the council, but it would be tabled right now indefinitely for further information. Counselor Drowba?
Well, that was gonna be my question. If we're tabling it, I mean, what are we, what is the purpose to table it? Are we gonna sit down on one-on-one with the loggers and hammer this out along with, are we, what are we doing? Are we tabling it indefinitely? Are we tabling it for six months to see what we can do? I just want to be clear on what, where this goes from today. I don't want to, in three weeks or in a month, have it come back up on the agenda and have these guys read about it in the newspaper. I want to know where it goes from here because I'm back and forth. I want to make sure that the people that are causing the problem understand that we're taking this seriously, but I also don't want to hurt the people that are working the job as well as they possibly can. So are we tabling it to have a discussion with the logging industry? Are we tabling it to figure out what we're gonna do in a committee? I mean, where does this go from here?
Well, my intention would be to have further discussions with the chief of police and the city attorney with regard to what we might do to modify the ordinance or enforce the state law. Maybe come back with a, certainly a sign, motion to have signs put up. In addition to something else, I can't tell you what, but certainly I would let Ray Higgins know if we're gonna do any, doing anything or if the issue is gonna come back before the council.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, what we do is communicate with the logging industry. Happy to fill that role. We were meeting a couple of weeks ago. The county's interested in having a meeting with the loggers by the end of April. We don't know how. Nonetheless, in the, talk about this issue on the county portion of it. And so, you know, the discussion will occur at that time. I've talked to, you know, several of our members who have wondered where they fall in a compliance standpoint, you know. Folks, you know, have any interest? So we'll certainly communicate if the conversation is going to happen.
I would turn back to Counselor Briggs. And what is your intention with the motion to table?
Until we have something that those people out there can live with, 100%.
I think Counselor Drowba's question is that we need to meet with the loggers?
Well, I would like to hope that we're gonna follow some of the suggestions of the city attorney and put signs up and see what happens by doing that first and see if the problem starts going away on its own. It sounds like there's already a state law that already addresses the issue of excessive noise, so I think we ought to give our police force an opportunity to, you know, and our public works, put the signs up and our police force to see if, even by posting a vehicle there a little bit and see what happens and go from there. It already sounds like there's, from the city attorney, there's already a written language that addresses excessive noise. And I think we don't need to pass another ordinance just to have something on the books that we don't enforce right, so.
One other comment, I think I brought it up at the last council meeting I was here, was that 332 has been there for almost 40 years, right? And why is it a problem now and it wasn't 40 years ago?
Exactly.
You know, I asked that question when this first came up, is, you know, what has happened that it's an issue now, but it wasn't 30 years ago, 35 years ago or whatever, or even 10 years ago?
It was an issue though because there was a signing on the other end on 53. It disappeared.
One of you guys took it?
But that's my point. You know, all of a sudden it's an issue now? A truck's louder now than they were? I would think that they, they wouldn't be with modern technology and using those kind of things.
There's more jake breaking now than there was 30 years ago. This is why I show up now. And another thing is, it's not to mention here, is we operators get tired of paying. And I got it down to an art. It's about $200 a wheel. So you take the rig that's got 12 wheels on it, which is costly.
I understand that because when we were up in the mountains and even on a diesel pickup and you put it on tow haul, it uses the engine to help brake when we're going downhill. So I understand what it's all about, so.
Well, I guess I don't want to see it tabled at the same time. Would like to do further investigation, but I think we've had sufficient discussion. Let's have a question.
Question?
On the, on the motion to table.
Aye.
And all vote no. There'd be three for the motion to table and one against the motion to table, so it's tabled indefinitely, but can be taken from the table at some time in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out and expressing opinions.
Appreciate your being here. Thank you. Item number two under the public hearing is the first reading of the ordinance, number 21 of the fifth series, regulating off sale, intoxicating liquor sales on Sunday. And my understanding, city attorney, you would like to meet with the land use and legislation committee and do it all in one...
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. You know, I looked at the new legislation on the state level having to do with Sunday and then at the suggestion of Administrator Anderson, you know, I looked at how we might modify our current liquor ordinance to include that, you know, which we could do fairly easily. But both Administrator Anderson and I feel that there's a number of things in our current liquor ordinance that are outdated and probably should be removed, but I didn't feel comfortable putting together a new ordinance just on my own without going through the committee process to determine what should be in there and what shouldn't. Like currently, right now, there's certain things in our ordinance that require, in order to have a liquor license, that the value of your building has to be, you know, fairly substantial, I think about $250,000. And I don't know that we've ever necessarily enforced that or looked, you know, I don't think we've required appraisals having to do with the liquor licenses that we've issued. And so there's, I mean, it's, it's so antiquated, it refers to county courts which haven't existed for 30 years. So my guess is this ordinance is very old. And I think the state, the League of Minnesota Cities, has a model ordinance that they put out there. And it'd be my thoughts that that would be a good place for us to start is with the League of Minnesota Cities' model ordinance. And if we need to fine tune that for our own local needs, we could do that. But there are a number of things in our ordinance that are not dealt with in the league ordinance, and I think we'd be better off without. So that would be my suggestion is that we set this up for committee and then we can go from there.
That'd be me.
Yeah, Counselor Briggs and Counselor Pearson, I believe you're the land use and legislations?
Yes.
And so would ask that you work with the city administrator and the city attorney in setting up a meeting to, on that ordinance then? All right? So that will be, we won't have the first reading, it'll just go to committee, referred to committee? All right? Thank you. Go to opening of bids, and we have approved the purchase of a Lucas CPR device from Physio Control Incorporated in the amount of $11,613.70 payable from the ambulance capital O L A for equipment. Chief, do you have any comments or, this is the same unit that we purchased previously?
Yeah, just briefly, the first unit we got on a grant. This would be a second unit. What we're running into is it's a very, we have a critical transfer going to Duluth. Now that's to be able to go to Duluth, but then we don't have. I would, it would be who wants to have a second one? It would be very beneficial to the department.
Thank you.
Respect.
Counsel's pleasure with the purchase? Motion by Counselor Briggs.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Discussion on the motion or the purchase? Question?
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion is carried and purchase is approved. Thank you. We'll go to old business, and we have a resolution supporting the servants of shelter and endorsing their requests for increased funding for affordable housing. Ladies. Hold up. Sorry to have you on the agenda at this point when we had this item before you, but...
No problem. It's wonderful to see democracy at work. So I emailed the resolution out to early last week, and I'm hoping that you had a chance to look it over. Once again, this is not a funding request for local funds. This is just merely an endorsement for a funding request being made at a state level where you would be sending a letter to Eklund and Bach, supporting more, more funds for affordable housing, supportive housing and emergency housing, already existing programs that we spread over nine existing programs that operate in the state, eight of which operate in our county.
Questions?
I do have questions. I read through the statutes that were listed and they don't all specify housing. Most of these are metro and there's no rural representation. So how do we know that?
They are state funding requests and they are spread across the, it's confusing because there's six different states, six different funding bills that they're involved in. If you look at the numbers, both in the House.
I read them all.
Yeah. And so those funds are state funds, so they are spread across the state. They shouldn't be tied to the metro because those, all of those programs, except for the Bridges program, operate in Kutchin County. And the Bridges program is tied specifically to chronically mentally ill people. We're working on getting that program up here, but we do not have it operating in the county at this time.
I understand that there's already one out there for this amount, doing the similar thing. Are we asking for an addition?
Yeah, it's a, it's a funding increase off of what the base funding is this year. It's $300,000 across all nine programs. So that's a $300,000 total and it's broken down in the funding breakdown that I sent accompanying.
So you believe all of these House files and Senate files that you have in the resolution deal with the rural part of our state?
It's my understanding that they do. It's my understanding that they're distributed. I know that we only work with two of those programs, but Kutaska and AOA are able to draw from some of the other sources. And we often refer people to them for programs such as rapid rehousing and our youth housing, which really helps. such as rapid rehousing, and our youth housing, which really helps rehouse people who are homeless, because we provide solely emergency housing, but in order to get someone into permanent housing, they often draw on these programs that offer transitional and supportive housing.
I think this isn't appropriate for a council to do, I would encourage this as individuals, if we wanted to do this, to write, I don't think it's appropriate for us. More to this than what's being told, or what's on the papers, I'm not saying that you're not doing a good job, and you're involved in something, that is good, but I don't think it's appropriate for us. I've read all of the statutes, both House and Senate, and it isn't totally what's described.
Okay, that's not the reading that I've done, but I'd be glad to sit down with you and talk over any of the issues you have. And there have been other city councils that have supported it, because they recognize the value of affordable housing in their area, and the need for emergency and supportive housing.
I understand that.
We only have two transitional housing units in the entire county.
I understand that, it just goes under core functions of government, that's all, for the municipal, I don't think that that is our job totally to be doing, individually we could give support.
Possible to focus which House files and Senate files, would the two programs that we utilize here?
Well, we actually utilize eight out of the nine, there's only one that's not operated in the county right now, which is the Bridges program.
We utilize all those programs for individual?
Eight out of the nine, yeah, and we're working with the HRA North Home to try to bring that ninth one up here, because we're one of the only counties in the state that does not have it right now.
And again, all of these House and Senate files pertain to the, to the programs?
Correct, under the Homes For All legislative funding request.
Counsel's pleasure, then, with the adoption of the resolution?
I would move on the resolution.
Motion by Council Droba to adopt the resolution, supporting servants of shelter and endorsing their requests for increased funding.
Second.
Second by Council Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the resolution? Are there none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, so there'd be being three, four, and one against, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you for your time again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda includes two items, approve the updated cooperative fire protection agreement between the DNR Division of Forestry and the International Falls Fire Department, and approve travel and training expenses for the administrator to attend the Minnesota City County Management Association Conference.
Move on the consent agenda.
Motion by Council Briggs to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Council Pearson. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion is carried, consent agenda is approved. Item under new business, item number one is to approve the mayoral proclamation proclaiming April two thousand seventeen as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Move on the proclamation.
Motion by Council Briggs to adopt the, approve the proclamation, and the printing, second by Council Droba. Discussion on the motion or the proclamation? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion is carried, proclamation is approved, thank you. Item number two under new business, excuse me?
If I may, and I probably should have mentioned this before the vote, but on the proclamation, on the last whereas, it says whereas the mayor joins Friends Against Abuse and believing in all community members must, should that more appropriately say the city council? The way it's worded there at the end, it makes it sound like you're just speaking for yourself, rather than that this whole city council has adopted this, and it's the mayor's proclamation, but I'm thinking that the city council really believes the entire thing, that's just a suggestion I would have, it's not a huge, huge thing, but...
I will certainly cover that with the organization that asks for this to be adopted, and if we can make that change, I will do so, I will note that, thank you. Item number two is to request the use of Smokey Bear Park and sponsorship of the International Falls Bass Championship to be held in Smokey Bear Park, August twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Susie?
You support him today?
Counsel's pleasure with the request for Smokey Bear Park.
Move.
Motion by Council Briggs to approve the use of Smokey Bear Park for the Bass Championship.
I'll second.
Second by Council Droba. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I have a question for the administrator, I noticed that this application is not signed by the chief executive officer, which I think is required, and I don't know if that, if it has been signed, or it's gonna be signed, I noticed the same thing on the next one that comes up, I think it's the Elks, that that did not appear to be signed either, and at some point, those need to be signed, if they haven't already been signed, so I just, just a point of order.
Clearly, they will be, yes.
Okay, please.
Really glad that you interjected, because it made me remember something. I believe there was some concerns from the Public Works Director on the use of the park, not that there was any issues with using the park, but would like to do a walkthrough with the Bass Championship as an organization on utilizing the space, if we could make sure that that happens before the organization starts taking effect, just a reminder that that was something that came up last year.
So, if you could get with Ted Brokha?
Sure.
The Beacon Parks Superintendent?
Certainly.
All right, that would be helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Further discussion with regard to the request for the use of Smokey Bear Park?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion is carried, request is approved. And then we have the resolution approving the application for the exempt permit for the International Falls Bass Championship to conduct a raffle on August the twenty-sixth in Smokey Bear Park.
I'll move.
Motion by Council Droba to approve. Second by Council Pearson. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the permit is granted. Item number four is a resolution approving application for a one-to-four day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Bass Championship.
I'll move.
Motion by Council Droba.
Second.
Second by Council Briggs. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and approval for the temporary license is granted. Item number five under new business, the resolution approving application for an exempt permit for the International Falls Elks Lodge to conduct a raffle, with the drawing to be held on May twenty, two thousand seventeen, your pleasure?
Move.
Motion by Council Briggs.
I'll second.
Second by Council Droba to adopt the resolution. Discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and approval is given for the exempt permit. Item number six, then, is the added item to the agenda, and that's the resolution approving the application for the exempt permit for the Voyager's Ducks Unlimited to conduct a raffle, with the drawing to be held on April thirteenth.
Move.
Motion by Council Briggs to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second by Council Pearson.
It's not a lot of time to put on a raffle.
No, sell some tickets in a quick hurry.
Just a second.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the exempt permit for the drawing is approved, thank you. Finally.
Hey, guys.
Pennies for Play Project update for the carnival in the park at Green Acres Park at noon on April the twenty-fifth, Ward, Derek, Tara, and Robin. Thank you for being so patient.
We're gonna be real cautious when we use the brakes around town, my goodness. Mr. Mayor and Council, thanks for having us here this afternoon, and we just want to give an update, I guess, on the Pennies for Play Project, and what we have hopefully planned for the Green Acres Playground in South Falls. With me, as you mentioned, Mayor, Robin Bierquist, who's our event coordinator at BACIS, initiated a project back in two thousand thirteen to raise some pennies for improvements at that playground. We were fortunate enough to link up a few months ago with Derek Foss, Supervisor of Public Health, and Tara Besch, who works with Public Health, and learned of an opportunity to do a sizable number of improvements at that park. And we're with the final push right now, I guess, gathering all the pennies we can. I'm gonna have Robin report a little bit, a little bit more on that, but we'd like to hold a carnival, a picnic at the park, and make a major announcement about where we are with funding and what the improvements will be. We haven't asked for permission for the carnival and a picnic, we need to do that today too, but I'll let Robin explain a little bit, and then maybe Derek and Tara chime in here too as well, so, Robin?
Well, yes, we would like to ask for permission to have a carnival and a picnic there on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, about twelve-thirty, one o'clock, we'll have a big announcement and a formal presentation of everything. This is the structure that we had kids vote on, there were three different structures, and this is the one that they selected, so we're very excited to be able to involve as many groups, organizations, and children as we can in completing this project. I do have little invitations for everyone, and we would love the community to come out and bring all their coins, every penny really does count, and it's just gonna be a fun little carnival, nothing very large, we'll have a few games and things like that, we'll have a nice little lunch, McDonald's is going to be providing a beverage for us, and I guess that's kind of the project that we would like to do.
Will you have some special guests?
We will have special guests that we cannot announce at this time, but we're, we shouldn't share that information yet, but the Bronco mascot will be attending, we're trying to get some of the cheerleaders to come, and we would like our local, some local football players to come out as well, most people who know me, I try to do everything, purple and gold, Vikings and Broncos, so that's, we're, we'll continue with our theme. And of course, Frank Usso has been so wonderful at supporting this project, and so he will be our carnival grand marshal.
Eric and Tara, can you add anything? We're operating under a little bit of secrecy here due to some of the funding we have.
Yeah, some of the stipulations regarding that, but we had an opportunity a few months ago, through the SHIP program, which is the State Health Improvement Partnership Program, Tara's our coordinator of that, and we decided to, we spoke with Ward and Robin regarding their Pennies for Play Project, we were able to team with them on something, to bring something pretty exciting to that Green Acres Park area, so we'd appreciate it. If you guys could all show up on that day, that would be wonderful.
I have it down for one o'clock now, which time is it, noon, twelve-thirty?
One o'clock is the formal announcement.
Okay.
We're putting twelve-thirty so that people can come and grab a bite to eat, and that the kids can come over and play the games.
And there will be additional information within the coming weeks here.
Very good. So, Counsel's pleasure with the Pennies for Play Project and the use of the Green Acres Park for the carnival and picnic.
I would be pleased to make the motion for that.
Council Briggs makes that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Council Droba. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I just want to say one thing, Robin, I know how hard you've been working on this, and kudos to finally seeing it come to fruition, because I know how hard and what you've done, and it's great, and I can't say thank you enough.
Well, thank you for your contribution.
And also, the coordinate, that's great, you know, it's super.
Robin herself, working with other folks in the community here, has raised over ten thousand, six hundred dollars for this, so, yeah.
Very well done, great partnership, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Please. I have a question, is there school that day, April twenty-fifth?
Unfortunately, there is, we do have St. Thomas children coming, we have some of the early head start children that will be coming over for this, and we have some of the local daycare children, of course, we've invited all of the kids, and if you wanted to declare that day no school day, I'm sure all of the children would much appreciate it.
Is this playground equipment, I mean, it looks kind of basic, kind of geared toward preschool type age kids more, or?
No, not necessarily, the age range, I think, was five to twelve, so it's not just for smaller children, it's for, you know, the elementary age and...
Very good.
And one thing too, I think, you know, the Green Acres Park is kind of one of those parks that's out of the mainstream, that people don't realize is even there, and that's what makes this even greater, and the fact that, as a city, we're not having to use taxpayer dollars to do this, we've got a citizen that has gone out and worked their butt off to make this happen, so...
Very good. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion is carried, and the carnival and picnic, and we'll be all there to slide down the slide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight under new business is to accept the letter of resignation from Jerry Jensen from the International Falls Fire Civil Service Commission and declare a vacancy.
I would, with regret, accept the letter of resignation.
By Council Droba.
With regret, second.
Second by Council Briggs to accept the letter of resignation with regret.
Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion is carried, and letter of resignation is accepted.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, wasn't it for both the civil service and the Charter Commission? Did I miss something in the...
Well, the city council doesn't have anything to do with the Charter Commission, that's appointed by the district court.
My mistake, thank you.
Item number nine is to accept the letter of resignation from Bill Larson Jr. from the North Coochin Area Sanitary District Board of Directors and declare a vacancy. Sorry to lose Bill.
With regret, I will accept the letter, or I would move for the acceptance of the resignation.
Motion by Council Droba.
And with regrets, I'll second that.
Second by Council Briggs to accept the letter of resignation from Bill Larson Jr. . Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion is carried, and letter is accepted, thank you. Item number ten is to consider the request of the police department to use Smokey Bear Park on August first, two thousand seventeen, three P.M. to nine P.M. to host the National Night Out events. Chief Maston?
Mr. Mayor? National Night Out is obviously a nationwide event where police departments volunteer and interact with, generally at block parties, or some sort of a festival within the city or county, and... within the city or county, and the whole purpose of it is to bring the enforcement of the community closer together. So I've spoken with the fire chief, customs, border patrol, sheriff's office, and the park service, and we are all looking to collaborate together and put on an event at Smokey Bear Park. We should have some entertainment and some displays.
Sounds like a great evening.
In the last two years now, the...
Community Wellness Action.
Community Wellness Action has been working, doing essentially the same type of thing. Is it your intention to work with them, or...
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, please, I can add, they had a board meeting last Wednesday, and there was a discussion about the police department's request to use Smokey Bear Park, and as Council Dova has indicated, the Community Wellness Action Council has had yard games events, and they've been fairly successful in the past. I guess I underestimated the attendance, but at one point, at one of the years, there was over 150 people there, and they quit counting, so it is pretty well attended, and they are interested in partnering with the police department on that event, and hopefully we can get all ages there, and as the chief indicated, there's going to be a number of other displays and other organizations involved, so I think it's grown, and it'll be much better than it has in the past. So to answer your question, the Community Wellness Action Council is interested in participating in.
Your pleasure with the request for the use of Smokey Bear Park.
I would move.
Motion by Council Dova to approve.
Second.
Second by Council Briggs. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried, and request is approved. Thank you. Item number 11 is to declare vacancies and authorize the Police Civil Service Commission to establish a list of eligible candidates for part-time police officer. Motion by Council Briggs to request the Police Civil Service Commission.
Second.
Second by Council Pearson. Discussion? Are you ready for summer?
Yes.
You've lost a few...
We've lost, we lost one of our very active part-timers to another city, and another one that we're probably going to lose as well, and Sergeant Christie should be retiring this year, which will drop from that list as well, so time to, time to...
Be prepared.
Get some bodies in there.
Very good. Further questions? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried, and the Police Civil Service Commission will establish an eligibility list. Item number 12 is to consider Public Works Committee recommendations. Item A, the Public Works Director is researching all of the infrastructure, various infrastructure, gas, lighting, water, sewer, storm sewer and all, to make sure of what we have in the alley behind the Veterans of Foreign Wars post, and he will be reporting that back to the Public Works Committee, so that does not require any action, just to counsel information. Item B is Public Works Director is authorized to contact an engineering firm to install flow meters in the sanitary sewer system, to assist in determining any inflow and infiltration, and that funds be expended from the water and sewer capital outlay account. Your pleasure with that?
I would move.
Motion by Council Dova.
Second.
Second by Council Pearson. Question? Please.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to, for everyone's information, it's a piece of the INI from the sanitary sewer district, everyone's looking to find out where this water is coming from, and the city's doing their due diligence to try to figure it out, so.
Good point, thank you. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried, and the Public Works Director is authorized to get that work going. Item C is the direct letters be sent to property owners fronting Sixth Avenue West from 17th Street to 20th Streets to determine if a majority desires permanent, bituminous surfacing improvements.
I would move on that.
Motion by Council Dova.
Second.
Second by Council Briggs. Discussion or questions?
This was one of the things when I ran at Center Ward two years ago that came up quite frequently on those roads. Everybody wants it to be paved, but they don't know how to go about it, so I think that this is a good step moving forward to try to get some additional infrastructure into the previous old South Falls area.
You know, campaigning last fall, probably at least six of the property owners had commented to me that they wanted to see something done. I don't know if that's the majority there, there are a number of absentee land owners, and so I guess we'll have to wait and see if there's a majority that are willing to do that, because the city would do the subgrade correction, but the bituminous surfacing would be assessed to the property owner. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried, and we'll work with administration to get those letters out. Thank you. Item D, authorize a staff to seek an appraisal and place for sale the property at the corner of 15th Street and Main Avenue, the site of the former Greater Garage.
I would move.
Motion by Council Briggs.
I'll second.
Second by Council Dova. Discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried, and the staff is approved to do that. Thank you. Item number E is no parking signs be posted on the west side of 10th Avenue between 5th Street and the alley to the south, because the property owner on the east side is not able to back out of the driveway when cars are parked there.
I thought that the recommendation was to put a no parking to the alley sign.
Well, that's right, no parking signs be posted between, so it may say that, no parking to the alley.
Okay, fair enough.
And we'll have to have the Public Works Director decide exactly where that sign should be placed.
Fair enough.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification, your letter says 4th Street?
Yes, it's 4th, I made a mistake in my letter.
It is 4th Street, not...
No, it's 5th Street.
Because it says 5th over here and 4th.
It's 5th.
Okay.
So my minutes or summary of the meeting was incorrect.
I would move on the recommendation.
Motion by Council Dova to approve the no parking signs be posted.
Second.
Second by Council Briggs. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried, and no parking signs will be established. Thank you. Council to take no action on the limit on, to further limit parking on 5th Street between 7th and 9th Avenue. We've done it on the block between 9th Avenue and 10th Avenue, but the committee is recommending that we take no action to limit any further no parking on 5th Street.
I would move on the recommendation.
Motion by Council Dova.
Second.
Second by Council Pearson. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried, and won't be any further action on that item. Thank you. And the last item from the Public Works is to authorize the director secure quotes for improvements on municipal state aid streets at 15th Street and 9th Avenue, and the alley between 18th and 19th Street, and 2nd and 3rd avenues. Move. Motion by Council Briggs.
Second.
Second by Council Pearson to authorize that action. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried, and the Public Works Director is authorized. Thank you. Any other business under new business? Not, we'll go to reports of the administrator.
I had no report, Mr. Mayor.
And city attorney?
I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Mastin.
This is Mr. Mayor, I have my monthly report for our activity through March. This is usually a pretty busy type of the year for us with training and whatnot, and this last month was no different. Officers are continuing their training with their consolidated response team. We had our TASER recertification training. Our officers executed two drug morgues in the month of March. As far as our general calls, we had 383 calls, 93 traffic stops, 22 medical assists, eight arrests, and we generated a little bit higher than this time last year, but pretty much.
Well, Chief Mastin, the good news last week of the work by your department in helping to locate the missing teen from International Falls, congratulations on that good work. Please pass that on to all your officers. Thank you for the report. Any questions to the chief on that report? Very busy month. Thank you. Chief Manasa?
Mayor, Council, report for the month of March. We had seven department callouts, three were city responses, four were rural. I don't want to go through each and every one of these. One of the notable ones on the city response, we got called for a house fire, and the only reason I'm bringing this up at the council level is we did have some questioning on this. We got dispatched to a house fire on Old Highway 11 or 11th Avenue. It turned out to be there was no fire present, it was steam from a water break, hit a furnace and created steam to set the fire alarm system off. We did stay at that house for a reasonable amount of time, till we had the hazards taken care of, there was some electrical and water, people still in the house, so we did stay on scene until those hazards were remedied. Again, the reason I'm bringing this up at council level is I did have some telephone calls concerning why the fire department responded to a water leak, and the dispatch criteria was a fire, so that's why we went, and we did stay on scene until it was safe to do so, so that's kind of the explanation there. One other notable response I wanted to talk about was on the rural side, we did have one water rescue. The reason that's kind of a notable response, if you look down further, we had ice water rescue training in March. That happened the day after our training, so it was kind of a Murphy's Law and a good timing for our training that month and what went on. Again, no other very notables on the responses, we did have two chiefs' responses for gas complaints, two CO alarms, and one CN train fill. Ambulance for the month of March, we had 69 911 calls, which is down from 80 last year. We had 49 transfers, which is down from 54 last year, for a total of 118 runs in March. Total runs for 2017, 229 111s, 145 transfers, for a total of 367. We did our regular meeting and training on the 8th of March, we had a regular business meeting, and we discussed diabetic emergencies. We did have some good input and some nice help from an outside source on that, so that was very good. And then I just wanted to bring up a reminder, we are having our yearly Relay for Life was last Saturday, but we do still do a fundraiser where some of our money goes to Relay for Life. We kind of do an all-encompassing fundraiser, and that's our pancake feed, which is going to be Saturday, April 29th. So we're looking to make sure we get people out for that, and we've, I don't want to misspeak on behalf of my fundraising committee, but I think we've put the money to three different sources, one of which is a scholarship, part of it goes to Relay for Life, and then some of it goes to the community cancer. So we kind of try and divvy our money equally amongst a few different resources, so that's kind of our, what we do with our fundraising. So again, that's the 29th, so hopefully we get people out for that at the fire station, so.
Very good. Questions? Looking forward to flipping pancakes and...
Yes, we're getting you a new griddle this year, I believe, so.
Oh, jeez.
We're getting you all tuned up.
Moving up in the world here.
Moving up in the world.
Need to work my wrist, make sure everything's ready to go. Thank you.
Just want to say, I find it very interesting that you're doing that water rescue training at that time in the evening, you know, out there off the ice and everything else, because my dog's barking, I'm, what's the heck's going on? And I see all them lights over there, Kelly says, was somebody in the water over there? I says, I don't know, and then it just happened that my daughter come by and said, well, see the fire truck over there with all the lights lit up and all that, so I kind of figured, well...
Interestingly enough, that's the first time we've ever done that in the dark, and we've, some of our past water rescues have all taken place in the dark, and we've never trained in the dark. The following night was a similar situation, it was, I don't remember the exact callout, 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, and the victim at that time was quite a ways offshore, so it was a very dark situation, so it kind of worked out good for the person, ended up self-rescuing, which was good, and then good for our guys that we were able to train in a realistic scenario, so.
I would say that the majority of the time it would probably be at night, because snow villagers don't see open water, or even the nighttime accidents with boats in the summertime, so.
Absolutely.
I think that's great training, so.
Further questions or comments for the chief? Great report, lots of work done. Look forward to the pancake feed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Go to reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Further to come, I've given you my written report. The Kuching Area Prevention and Education, they're going to be hosting a dinner, I believe everybody's going to be invited to that. They have a speaker coming from the Montana Institute, and I know the students will be here at the city council meeting on May the 1st, so look forward to hosting them. If that, is there anyone in the audience that has something to bring the attention of the council? All right, the next regular meeting is Monday, April 17th at 4:30. Anything further, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.